Good evening. Today is Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. Today is a special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. I have a motion to convene the meeting. First Scott, second Allison, all in favor? Okay, we are going to convene to executive session to discuss some employee issues. I have a motion to convene to executive session. First Scott, second Allison, all in favor? Okay, we'll see you in about an hour. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. This is a special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. We opened the meeting already at 6:30 for an executive session. We just came out of that. We're gonna have to go back in because we have another item we didn't get to. So we'll do that at the end. So we don't need to open, we're ready to go. So first thing is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag. In the United States of America, to the republic which is safe and one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first thing up is our workshop topic and presentation for the high school and guidance update. So we'll just turn it over to whoever's doing that. And I'll, we'll have to move, I guess, before we lock in the TV.
Our principal, Mr. Rod D. Arthur, and our director of curriculum, Chris Keel, will be presenting the great, amazing work that's been done with the guidance department. We're very proud of the guidance department. Thank you. It's also a high school update.
Good evening, Board President Kasson, Vice President Benke, Board Trustees, Superintendent Schools, Dr. Goodman, and Tuckahoe families. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on the work of the School Council Department and the progress we've made in supporting our students' success. Before we begin, I'd like to express our gratitude to Mrs. Lauren Nicoletto, our Guidance Secretary, and to our exceptional school counselors, Mrs. Perrello and Mr. Treglier, for their dedication to our students' post-secondary success. We also appreciate our faculty and staff and the administrators, Mr. DeBellas and Mr. Colaswino, for their leadership and support. Thank you to our district leaders, including Dr. Goodman, who brings a wealth of knowledge and expertise in these areas. At the core of our district mission, to prepare every student for excellence, is a strong supportive learning community, with our School Council Department playing a key role. Last year, we focused on the steps taken to guide our scholars through the college application process and refining our curriculum and course offerings. We received and reflected on your feedback. Working alongside our teachers and our guidance team, we have broadened our offerings even more. Tonight, we turn our attention to expanded opportunities for all students. We review our progress over three areas: increased opportunities and increased rigor, enhanced communication, and continuous improvement. Now let's begin by exploring the ways we have taken your feedback to increasing opportunities for students and enhancing rigor to their intellectual pursuits.
When we talk about expanding opportunities, we begin by looking at course offerings. By introducing new and innovative course offerings at both middle and high schools, we've created pathways for students to explore their interests and develop essential skills. At the middle school, we've launched courses designed to prepare students for success in school and beyond. One example is Strategies for Success, where students sharpen their executive functioning skills, study strategies, and overall academic readiness. This course was developed collaboratively, using survey data, input from teachers and families, and coordination with the 5th grade team at Cottle. Ms. Blanchard has designed a forward-thinking, responsive course that equips students with tools that they need to succeed. Another exciting addition at the middle school is podcasting. Under the guidance of Mr. Moore, students are engaging in authentic, product-based learning as they explore musical genres and expand their technological toolkits. At the high school, we've enriched our science offerings with courses like environmental science, anatomy and physiology, sports medicine, and astronomy. These courses allow students to dive deeper into scientific areas of their interest. Additionally, we have also expanded our technology education program to include a second course in the engineering sequence.
Another central component of expanding opportunities is creating engaging learning environments. This year, we've embraced the conceptual framework of Universal Design for Learning, or UDL. This approach has challenged us to consider how we can eliminate barriers and teach for the diverse needs of our learners. By providing access for all, we are creating more inclusive classrooms that benefit all students, including those with special needs and English language learners. Our participation by Dr. Amy List has been instrumental in this work. Another exciting initiative is our district-wide adoption of Wordly Wise. This program, introduced in collaboration with Carter School, grades 3 through 5, builds on a strong foundation in the science of reading. Wordly Wise provides explicit vocabulary instruction with an structured scoping sequence, preparing students for long-term success, including on SAT and ACT. We also understand the critical role that our library plays in providing opportunities for our learners. Our library media specialist, Ms. Aya Monaco, has built incredible energy and vision as she helped to resign our library space. She has connected students to texts that spark interest and expand understanding, collaborated with teachers on strategies, technology tools, and research database, and even expanded our collection based on students' feedback. On the digital front, Ms. Aya Monaco has revamped our library website, redesigning the catalog, and onboarding students to Sora, a platform for audiobooks and ebooks. Her efforts also expand beyond the classroom, coordinating with author visits, collaborating with local libraries and the PTA, and facilitating civic engagement by registering 38 students to vote. Ms. Aya Monaco has focused on enhancing research skills by restructuring our database to provide access to college-level resources and developing a district-wide citation protocol. She has also launched a research boot camp and collaborates with teachers on key search, citation, and more. Moving forward, we aim to expand this program to middle school, creating a comprehensive 6-12 research curriculum to prepare students for a technology-driven world.
We are committed to preparing students for both college and career success by offering various career exploration opportunities. Programs like Pathful Explore, the senior internship program, and participation in debate and public speaking help students connect their passions to career paths, build critical skills, and gain confidence. Equally important is our dedication to cultivating leadership skills. Through our partnership with Junior Achievement, we offer students the opportunity to teach younger students about financial literacy, empowering them to become leaders and role models in their own community. Junior Achievement not only develops leadership, but creates a unique bridge between our high school students and our scholars at Cottle. By focusing on career exploration and leadership development, we're ensuring that our students are equipped with the skills, experiences, and mindset needed to succeed in an ever-changing world.
We're excited to share some of our new summer college workshops, developing collaboration with the admission counselors from three universities. This program brought our counselors to campus to meet our rising seniors and their parents, focusing on building professional networks, writing strong college essays, and maximizing the Navvion's process. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive, with participants appreciating the resources and the guidance on both the application process and finding the best-fit college. Now let's watch a video highlighting the impact of this initiative and the outstanding work of our counseling team.
On Tuesday, August 6th, 22 students and parents from the class of 2025 participated in the Tuckahoe Summer College Workshop. The goal of the workshop was to prepare every student for excellence. Admissions representatives from Manhattanville University, Iona University, and Manhattan College were on campus. The day started with a breakfast sponsored by the Tuckahoe PTA. The agenda for the day included a keynote address, "The Landscape of College Admissions: Supporting Your Students from the College Search and Financial Aid for Families: The New FAFSA." Our students participated in workshops led by the college admissions representatives on planning the college essay, professional networking, and the Common Application.
Another way we expand opportunities is by thinking beyond the traditional classroom. One example of this is our upcoming trip to Iceland, an incredible opportunity for our scholars to take the knowledge they have acquired in the classroom and apply it to a real-world setting. We selected Iceland for its unique richness in geological history and its direct connection to several of our courses, including environmental science, chemistry, biology, and physics. This experience will allow our students to witness science in motion firsthand. They'll explore geothermal technology and learn how Iceland uses it to power homes, providing insights into real-world application, careers, and entrepreneurship. Beyond the scientific connections, this trip offers students the chance to immerse themselves in a new culture and discover wonders of international exploration. It is an opportunity for personal and intellectual growth that aligns perfectly with our mission, statement, and curriculum goals. Having visited Iceland myself, I saw firsthand how this trip reflects the vision of the Board of Education and our superintendent's goals: bringing innovation, enriching experiences, to the lives of our students.
And that's your video. Firsthand footage. Expanding rigor is central to our commitment to academic excellence. Despite being a small school, we ensure our students can compete with peers from any district. This year, we added four new AP courses, offering students the chance to engage in advanced coursework that challenges them and provides potential college credit. We appreciate the Board of Education's support in all of these expansions. Looking ahead, we recommend adding AP Cybersecurity and AP Seminar next year. AP Seminar prepares students for research, collaboration, and critical thinking. It will also serve as a bridge to AP Language and Literature. AP Cybersecurity focuses on real-world technology applications, equipping students with college-edge skills in high-demand fields like law enforcement and military. These additions are part of a broader effort to align curricula and ensure students are well-prepared for challenges. We're proud that the College Board has affirmed the strength of our AP program, and we look forward to expanding opportunities for academic excellence. Here you can see a comprehensive list of our accelerated course offerings, which now include our two proposed additions, AP Seminar and AP Cybersecurity. Notably, in 10th grade, AP Seminar will take the place of English 10 honors. This course offers honors-level students the opportunity to explore the structure and demands of an AP course in a supportive environment. Unlike other AP courses, AP Seminar does not include an exam at the end, but instead focuses on preparing students for the rigor and demands of AP courses in the following years. This shift provides a meaningful foundation for success in advanced coursework. Additionally, while we explored dual enrollment opportunities, the College Board's cybersecurity offerings spoke to our commitment to introducing job readiness skills through real-world applications. Over the past few years, we've seen steady growth in our accelerated offerings. We remain committed to expanding these opportunities, continuously reflecting on data and student interest surveys to ensure our programs meet the diverse needs and interests of our community.
Over the past five years, we have seen a steady increase in our students' AP scores, particularly in the number of students receiving qualifying scores of 3 or higher, with a score of 5 being the highest possible score. This growth in student performance reflects not only the hard work of our students, but also the dedication of our faculty and staff to provide rigorous and engaging coursework. Additionally, it highlights the commitment of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools to offer our teachers with professional development opportunities that enhance their educational instructional practices. We also are proud to highlight the recognition of many of our students who have earned outstanding performance by the College Board. This year, 31 of our students received some form of recognition through the College Board AP Scholar Awards. These achievements reflect the strength of our AP program and continued success of our students as they rise to meet the challenges of advanced coursework. This chart illustrates how we have consistently expanded opportunities for our students year after year. Each addition in bold represents a step towards preparing students for success beyond high school and being able to compete with students graduating from other schools in our region. I'd like to highlight a few of these new opportunities we have introduced this year, including college field trips, campus tours, guest speaker events. These initiatives, we have expanded on this slide and are proud of what we've been able to achieve. We've adopted the backward design approach to ensure students are well-prepared before reaching their senior year. Through these opportunities, students are exposed to a variety of options available to higher education, whether it's visiting different types of campuses, a city campus or a traditional campus, or meeting university representatives to gain insights into the admission process. By building these opportunities each year, we are helping our students explore their options, developing confidence, and make informed decisions about their future.
To support students in the college admissions process We've partnered with local universities to offer on-the-spot essay feedback from admissions representatives. This initiative allowed 35 students to receive personalized guidance, improving their essays and gaining insights into the application process. We're proud to be the only school in the region offering this type of workshop, and this feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. Students described the experience as transformational, helping them enhance their essays and boost their confidence. Let's take a moment to hear from our students and to see the workshop in action.
So today, we have five universities that are here with our students, providing them with feedback on the college essay. Where students are coming with essays either completed, partially done, and our school counselors that are here from these universities, they're actually providing students with on-the-spot feedback.
I was hoping to get feedback on my essay because mainly I was working on it by myself and I wanted to see what other people thought of it, and I just needed a fresh set of eyes.
How they could develop their essay, if their essay is strong, if there are things they need to improve. So it's a wonderful opportunity for our scholars.
I think students sometimes think their writing is not the best, and then they get some feedback, and I think it really gives them a ton of confidence to know their essay's fantastic already, just kind of boosts them up more, and then just gives a little feedback to them.
It's really put together by our school counselors, Mrs. Jessica Perrello, and certainly Mr. Phil Treglier. It has been tremendous. Almost 50% of our students in our senior class have actually responded. They have 30 minutes to meet with admissions counselor, where they're getting feedback on their essays, and the students are really taking advantage of that. So for us as a school, providing our scholars with service, which this is, providing our students with the scholarships, opportunities, is extremely important. None of this would be possible without our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Amy Goodman, and the Board of Education, which have been tremendously supportive of our students and our families. So we're really responding to the needs of our students and our community. So I just want to thank the Board for their support, and Dr. Goodman, it's really a team effort. As you know, class size often fluctuates before the start of the school year due to many factors such as classroom enrollment, scheduling conflicts. To address these challenges, we are modifying the course change drop-form process in an attempt to balance class sizes. The school counselors will release student schedules by the first week of June, allowing them to add or drop courses in June, throughout the summer, and the first week of September, ending on September 5th. This will allow the school counselors to add and adjust class rosters, attempting to balance classes in a timely manner. Key features of this initiative include early planning. Students and school counselors will work together in May to make thoughtful course selections aligned with students' goals and interests and teacher recommendations. Second, balanced classes. By evaluating enrollment early, we can reallocate students as needed, preventing overcrowding or under-enrolled sections. Third, improve transitions. Early adjustments reduce disruption, creating a smooth start to the school year for both students and staff. We believe this proactive approach will enhance the learning environment and ensure that all students are placed in the correct courses that best suits their needs.
As part of our ongoing commitment to provide students with valuable opportunities, we've developed strong relationships with a variety of universities, which have proven to be highly beneficial. While we understand that not every student may choose to attend a college or university, our primary goal is to equip our scholars with the information they need to make well-informed decisions in collaboration with their families. This slide highlights our efforts to bring colleges and universities directly to our campus, beginning with sophomore years. This year alone, we've hosted 70 college representatives, giving students the chance to meet with them and learn more about their options.
In our ongoing commitment to providing students with valuable opportunities, we recognize the importance of not only inviting college representatives to the campus, but also giving our scholars the chance to experience college life firsthand. During my first year, our school counselors and administrative team collaborated to organize college trips to Binghamton University and Iona University. The feedback we received from both students and families was overwhelmingly positive. These experiences inspired us to do even more for our students. Building on that success, and with the support of the Board of Education, Dr. Goodman, we planned an exciting overnight trip this year to visit three top-tier universities in the Boston area: Boston College, Northeastern University, and Boston University. This trip allowed our students to experience not only college life, but also the difference between the traditional college campus and those located in the urban setting. An especially memorable part of the trip was the opportunity for our scholars to meet Matthew Kern, a Tuckahoe High School graduate, who graciously took time out of his busy schedule to speak with our students and walk the campus of Boston College with us. His presence, insights, and guidance motivated our students and provided an authentic connection that was particularly inspiring for our seniors. In addition to the Boston trip, we coordinated a campus tour to Fordham University for both juniors and seniors, as well as visits to Manhattan University and Westchester Community College. These efforts reflect our dedication to expose our students to a variety of options and educational environments. Looking ahead, and based on our students' college selections, we are in the process of organizing another overnight college campus trip on the 25-26 school year, this time to the Philadelphia area. Our ultimate goal is to continue to provide our scholars with as many opportunities as possible.
As a close-knit school community, it's essential that we continue to create an environment where graduates feel that Tuckahoe still remains their home. We strive to cultivate a strong sense of community, one that encourages our alumni to return and give back. This year, we continue our annual alumni panel, inviting graduates to meet with our senior class and share their experiences as college students. This panel featured alumni from a diverse array of institutions, including SUNY schools, private colleges, southern universities, and even an international perspective with a student studying abroad in Italy. This event provided our 12th-grade students with real-world advice and perspectives as they prepare for the next chapter in their lives. There are other instances in which alumni come to our campus and give back to our students. We are proud of the continued connection between our alumni and current students, and we look forward to these meaningful interactions in the future. All these efforts culminate in what you see on this slide. Our students are being accepted to a wide range of colleges and universities. At Tuckahoe, our goal is to ensure that every student graduates with options. While not every student may aspire to attend college, we want each of them to have the freedom to choose the path that best fits their aspirations. Whether pursuing a traditional university, a specialized program, or another post-secondary opportunity, our mission is to prepare every student for excellence by empowering them with the opportunity to chart their own course. Next, we turn our focus to how we've enhanced communication with families, students, and higher education institutions to better support our scholars and their future success.
We prioritize clear and consistent communication with our families and students. This slide highlights several tools and initiatives we've introduced to keep everyone informed and engaged. We've developed tailored brochures and questions to guide college visits, along with high school profile and course catalogs to clearly and outline our course offerings. Our principal's weekly newsletter provides updates on school events, and the course selection focuses on college application and scholarships and much more. We're also expanding our use of Navvions for the college planning, offering recorded presentations on the FAFSA and other important topics. School announcements reinforce key updates on deadlines and opportunities, ensuring students and families have the information they need to navigate the college admissions process with confidence.
Another way we've enhanced communication is through the modernization of our high school profile. This document serves as a critical tool in representing our school to colleges and universities, and we've made significant updates to ensure it reflects the excellence of our school community. The redesigned profile features striking visuals and an organized layout that captures attention. It showcases refreshed data and language, highlighting our strong academic programs, diverse course offerings, and advanced opportunities available to our students. Most importantly, the profile spotlights our students' successes, giving them an edge in the college admissions process. It demonstrates the value of a Tuckahoe education to any higher education institution, ensuring our students are recognized for their achievements and the rigorous preparation that they have received. Additionally, we redesigned our course catalog. This updated resource is now more accessible and user-friendly, making it easier for families and students to navigate their academic options. You may be familiar with last year's publication, which has been positively received by families and students alike. The catalog features enhanced visuals, a clean, modern layout designed for clarity and readability. To ensure accessibility, we published hard copies for all families, providing a tangible resource that they can refer to throughout the year. Within the catalog, we included clear and detailed outlines of course offerings, with easy-to-follow course sequences to support all students' academic planning. Important information has been streamlined, including policies and procedures, making the catalog a practical and intuitive tool for students as they consider academic and career paths. By modernizing this resource, we're giving families the tools they need to make informed decisions and help students chart a clear course toward their goals.
Another key aspect of enhancing communication is our focus on community meetings, which provide opportunities to engage directly with students and families about the college planning process. The guidance department has redesigned college planning meetings to provide a more data-driven and tailored to students' needs, providing actionable insights at each stage. We've introduced the principal coffee session, dedicated on a variety of topics. Additionally, we've increased the number of evening meetings for parents and students. These meetings have become more robust, incorporating more data, guest speakers, and experts to provide comprehensive guidance and address the unique needs of each grade level. Through these initiatives, we have strengthened our connection with families and create more opportunities for meaningful collaboration, preparing our scholars for their future. All of these initiatives are made possible through our commitment to constantly reflect and continuous improvement. For our final section, we'll highlight how we use the application of data, surveys, and professional learning to enhance our efforts and ensure we're providing the best possible support for our students. We are pleased to share some exciting updates regarding our seniors' college application progress and the ongoing effort to connect them with higher education opportunities. This year, by November 15th, 75% of our seniors had already applied through early action, early decision, reflecting the dedication and ambition of our students as they begin their college search. As of January 15th, 69% of our seniors had already been accepted to at least one college, which speaks to the hard work of our students and the support they've received throughout this process. As previously noted, between September and November of this year, we welcomed 70 college representatives to Tuckahoe High School, further enriching our students' understanding of the post-secondary options. These visits were made possible through our strong partnership with several prestigious universities and colleges, including Binghamton University, Manhattan University, Fordham University, Iona University, Manhattanville University, and Westchester Community Colleges. These partnerships have allowed us to offer our students a wealth of information and opportunities to explore a diverse range of institutions. In addition to these visits, we also recognize our college café led by Ms. Perrello and Mr. Treglier. Mr. Treglier, where 75% of our seniors have participated this year. This event provides a valuable opportunity for students to ask questions, gather insights, and take an active role in their college decision-making process. As we continue to guide our seniors through this exciting time, it is clear that the collaboration between our staff, college representatives, and families has had a profound impact on our students' success. We remain committed to providing all of our scholars with resources and support they need to make informed, confident decisions about their future.
Continuous improvement requires ongoing professional learning to ensure our team stays informed, prepared, and aligned with best practices. Here are some key professional learning initiatives we've engaged in this year. Our counselors actively participate in a local guidance consortium, visiting other high schools to learn from their practices and bring innovative ideas back to our district. The admissions counselors from Fordham University hosted a training for our teachers on writing impactful college recommendation letters. Training arranged through the College Board has enhanced our use of data, instructional tools, and strategies for supporting students in advanced coursework. Additionally, teachers have attended AP summer institutes, further strengthening our AP curriculum and ensuring our staff is well-prepared to guide students. Through these initiatives, we've continuously enhanced our expertise and ensured our students benefit from the most current and effective practices. Speaking of our College Board workshop and some of our data review, one piece of data that stood out is the increase in the number of AP exams taken over time. As shown in the chart, the dark blue bars highlight the growth from 145 exams in 2020 to 191 exams in 2024, a significant jump that reflects our commitment to expanding access to rigorous coursework. What's particularly noteworthy is the narrowing gap between the number of exams taken and the number of qualifying scores. This demonstrates that as we've opened the door of opportunity to more students, the quality and rigor of our program has not only been maintained, but it's actually led to greater success. More students are achieving at a higher level, even as participation has expanded. This is a testament to the strength of our AP program and the support structures we put in place to help students thrive. It's an exciting development, and we look forward to continuing this trajectory of growth and achievement.
This quote, "Do something today that your future self will thank you for," is a quote posted in our building and one that I share with scholars every opportunity I get a chance. We are a loving and learning community that really cares about our scholars, and it is our collective goal to support them throughout their journey.
We have thank you, but you can go back to your seats. And while you say we just had one last slide, but you can see the word discussion. So we want to extend our gratitude to the Board of Education for your continued commitment and unwavering support of our community. We also wish to acknowledge Dr. Goodman's leadership in collaboration, guidance, and encouragement. Her dedication to our schools has been instrumental in driving positive change and improving outcomes for our students. Under her leadership, every effort has been strategically aligned with our goals, ensuring that we stay focused on achieving objectives outlined in our strategic plan. We also want to thank Ms. Sparks for her creativity and thoughtfulness in helping us maximize our resources.
We'd also like to express our sincere appreciation to the PTA President, Ms. Susan Warner, for their ongoing partnership and continued support of our learning community. Their dedication has been instrumental in enriching and enhancing educational opportunity for our students, both inside the classroom as well as outside. Through their collective efforts, teachers have been able to extend learning opportunities and provide additional resources that have enriched our scholars' academic journey. We are truly grateful for their continued commitment to the success of our students. Finally, our sincere thanks to Mrs. Dr. Goodman, Mrs. Bauer, Mr. Calasuno, Mr. De Bellis, the entire faculty and staff for their commitment and tireless effort to ensure that our students have the best education possible. Thank you for the Board of Education for your continued support and guidance and thorough feedback, allowing us to continue to improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. You guys want to come and sit for a minute? Did you want to jump right into? You wanted a discussion first?
Let's do a discussion first with them, right? First of all, I just want to thank you. That was really a great presentation. I think we all saw the hard work that went into that. You know, our strategic plan is being followed so carefully, meeting all our goals, and we really thank, first of all, the two of you for leading and steering that ship and for the assistant principals in your building. Of course, you know, I always say the boots on the ground are the people that are delivering, which are our fantastic guidance counselors and our teachers and our AP teachers and everybody pretty much that you recommended. But I see, just as superintendent, such a big difference over these years of our connections with colleges and our process, and a lot of this has been also driven by the board, and I really do thank them. This is what I think everybody wanted to see, so thank you so much. Am I not on?
Don't touch the mic as you...
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, okay. I hope people heard me, but thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes. Thank you.
All right. Well, obviously, you guys covered a lot in that presentation. It was pretty broad in terms of topics, right? But you hit on something I wanted to mention, which the most thing that pops out to me the most is, it was very tangible this year, is the vast amount more of interactions our kids had with colleges this year in terms of trips outward and bringing the schools here. That was very noticeable. Much more opportunities for our kids to interact with colleges than we've had in the past, so definitely attribute to you guys and very noticeable, so thank you for that. So that was just one thing I wanted to bring up. And then, you know, on the other front, it's nice to see, and it's been happening every time, every year I've been on the board, and it's great to see that it keeps going, is the expansion every year of more APs and more, you know, non-traditional, non-curriculum-type class offerings that we keep offering our kids. So it's good to see that that's keeping going, and it was nice to see the AP scores increasing. So that's all really good, really good trends.
Really, the highest has been in five years.
Yeah.
So tremendous credit to our teachers for the work that they're doing in the classroom.
Yeah. On the college front, too, in addition to the interactions with colleges, all the stuff that you guys have been doing, too, in terms of getting, helping kids with their applications has been very obvious, too, in the last two years. The workshops and the...
Yeah, the essay-writing workshop, for sure.
Yeah, all that stuff. Really, really good. I do have one, you know, continuous improvement, right? So I do have one sort of constructive feedback I like to provide, having been a parent, I went through it through a senior this year, and also just here from other parents. This year particularly, there seemed to have been a little bit of a disconnect or a breakdown in what, I guess there was a recent, some colleges made some recent changes about what they were requiring for math and language and what they wanted to see on applications, and it didn't seem like we were sort of ahead of the curve on that a little bit, quite frankly. And again, it may have just been something that changed quickly, but I know that a couple of parents, and I'll put myself in that boat, did a little bit of a last-minute scramble to get our kids Algebra II because some colleges came out and said they wanted to see that now. So I don't know what the fix is, and I'm just kind of throwing it out there as a question, and especially being that we seem to have so much more relationship-building happening now at more and more colleges. I'm not sure if you're aware of this issue that happened this year, and what can we do to make sure our guidance counselors are staying ahead of the curve in terms of what colleges are looking for, and then making sure that gets communicated back to parents, you know, in a timely manner? Because that was one part that I thought was a little bit of a breakdown, too, because it didn't seem, it seemed like it was something that happened fast, but also the parents were the ones sort of initiating the conversation, not the other way around. So again, just throwing it out there for constructive criticism and ways that we can improve, and that's sort of something you're already tracking on.
So we were informed of the change regarding Algebra II last minute. It was not something that we were made aware of, and as soon as we found out, we worked collectively as a team to figure out how we could support our students to make sure that taking Algebra II was going to be a priority, to make sure it doesn't create any obstacle. So one of the things, you know, Mr. Bagetti said last year during our meeting here, and it's connected to what you're saying, you know, he challenged us to build more relationships with colleges, and that's what we have done. So to answer your question, how do we get ahead to make sure that we're not caught asleep at the wheel, right? And the relationship with the colleges, and for example, this year, Mrs. Perrello visited Manhattan University, attending some workshops. She's also part of the consortium of other counselors, some of who are directors of counseling centers, is another way. None of them knew this information, because we did a deep dive to figure out, how do we not know any of this? It did not come out. And it was not all universities. There were certain universities, especially some of the southern schools. So building the relationships, extending those relationships, and not only with local schools, but also schools within our state and beyond, is one of our efforts, and hopefully you saw it in our slide. So really forming those relationships so we can always be informed early of what we need to do. And that's one way that we're trying to stay ahead of any shifts or changes, also sending our counselors to national conventions, right? So these are things that we're looking to do to make sure we're always on top of any shifts or changes that are happening.
If I could say something, too. So, you know, southern schools are something that we see our students are really interested in, so we really need to know what the schools that our kids want to go to are looking for. But secondly, we are also looking at for next year, how important are certain courses that we already have up there, like the Regents courses? Now that New York State is looking at, number one, the Regents not even be a graduation requirement in two years, and other than even SUNY schools, I think that it's just, you know, a lot of districts go for more higher-level classes than just, you know, an advanced Regents diploma, which isn't recognized the same way it used to be. So we could put in an Algebra II, and we could put in another AP seminar, so that, you know, that will look better than some of the Regents courses, even than some of the honors courses. So we need to start looking at what colleges are looking at, and I know you guys have talked about it.
And we have, and just to add one other piece. So we're inviting the southern schools to come to our campus. So right now, we have University of South Carolina scheduled to visit. Last year, we had University of Alabama. Again, building those relationships because our students have shown a strong interest in southern schools. So we need to, you know, shift our focus and our priorities to meet those demands. So that's some of the things that we're doing.
And just to say one thing about our, and I think it's great that we're doing that, but these schools, by meeting our students and coming here, are really impressed with them, because I've spoken to them. Our students have made a great, a great impression on them, and now they know who Tocco is and who our students are, and that's also another benefit of it.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else have any comments?
I have a question, actually. For the AP seminar that's going to replace the English tent, so you said there's no exam at the end, does that mean it doesn't qualify if you get, if there's no exam, there's no college credit? Is that right?
There isn't college credit associated with it.
I mean, not that you're getting college credit anyway.
Correct, I guess with other APs.
With other APs.
Right. If you score a certain score and all of that kind of stuff. So the other thing I wanted to say, I did attend the summer workshop this summer. It was really informative. As somebody who's like a first-time college, a looking parent, whatever, speaking, I don't know. So I was completely new to the process, and I think what's especially useful, and I thought was interesting, that I think you said 75% of the kids applied early action or early decision, because early decision is financially binding. And the financial person, who I couldn't tell you her name right now, but she was excellent, and I think one of the, one of the pieces of advice that I took from her was the importance of having like real financial discussions with your kids and not, like, we all want to not talk about money and with our children and not have them worry about it, but going into debt to the tune of like 300 grand, because you really have to go to X school, is it worth it for a bachelor's degree? Do you know what I mean? And so that really changed the way I approached the conversations with, you know, my kids, and I think it's an important take-home message, because at the end of the day, you don't want to leave with a mortgage. And then if you want to pursue education or, you know, healthcare and you're going for masters and like, you know, it can really add up very quickly. So I was surprised that that many people applied. I guess that's early action, too, which isn't binding, but...
Correct. And as a parent of two children in college, I completely understand, because my daughters are very particular where they wanted to go to school without looking at that price tag, so I hardly agree with you. The college workshop that we offered, we felt that it was something that was very much needed, and again, and thank Dr. Goodman for challenging us, to make sure that not only our students, but our families were constantly being provided with additional tools and resources. So that was our first year doing it. We are committed to doing it again, right? As well as offering that workshop where our students receive 30 minutes with a mission counselor to work on a college essay. So we're constantly looking at what else can we do to support our students. So that's definitely something that we're trying to do, and just make it part of who we are. And we're probably one of the only schools in this region that offers something like that, even the college trips, right? So, you know...
The college trips are great.
Yeah, they're great.
Even if you don't want to go to Manhattan University or wherever, just the fact that you're looking at urban versus suburban versus, you know, Binghamton's, I guess we're rural.
Sure.
Whatever. But, you know, just to get a feel of like what type of school, because there's a bazillion schools to choose from.
And we have some students that don't want to leave Westchester County and some students that don't want to go to four-year school. We had 10 students who showed an interest in a community college. We brought Westchester Community College here. All 10 students got accepted. We didn't stop there. Dr. Goodman, Ms. Sparks supported, and we were able to get the students to go visit Westchester Community College. Now we're starting to look at some college fears, because, career fears, excuse me. And what we've learned is that Westchester Community College, you don't have to go get an associate's degree.
No, it can be, it can be a launching pad. I actually have a patient who wasn't ready to leave home, whatever, you know, whatever schools they committed, applied to, ended up not working out, they got cold feet, a lot of them were southern schools, and when you realize, oh, I'm going to go to Florida from New York, whatever, went to Westchester Community College and transferred to Cornell. Because you, like, it's a great opportunity in transferring in, and speaking of like being financially savvy, right? It's a good way to get credit at a discounted price.
Yeah, no, no. It's a good financial strategy, for sure.
One of the things that we've learned...
Yeah, because your degree's going to be from Cornell. Nobody's going to say, did you go to Westchester for your first semester? Nobody cares.
One of the things that we've learned recently from, again, our partnership with...
It's Sparks, it's a great, it's Sparks.
So echoing what you're saying, one of the things that we learned recently from some of our relationship with college representatives, that there's been an increased number of university, top universities, that are accepting students transferring in, right? Almost like 30 to 35% of their class get filled by students who are transferring in. So, you know, it's not a black eye if a student wants to start at a community college, right? But what you're going there for and how you're going to do can really determine how well you do moving on to a four-year university. So we're just trying to flood our students and families with as much information as possible.
Just to get off the college thing for one second, and thank you. I think it's great the amount of schools that were visiting and coming here, and that's something that I was big on when I came onto the board. How did we get to this AP seminar class? Like, how did that come about? And just, and only because, you know, I look at the kids that are going to Fordham and Iona that were losing, and for retention, you know, I think I'd love to see like a business class, a finance class. You know, I know we tried the accounting thing, it's on the course offering, but we couldn't get the enrollment, so the accounting thing didn't work out, but...
We do have a finance class, though.
We, but it's world markets. It's a little different, but I know we tried the accounting, it's not on the, it's not here, but, you know, I look at science research, right? I look at engineering science, robotics, aeronautical science, you know, that's, to me, I like to see maybe some of these offerings like Fordham and Iona have, because we're losing kids to these schools for rigor. I mean, they're not going there to play, you know, you're not going to Iona to play basketball, that's for sure. We're losing kids, unless you're Legacy, that's one thing. But if we're losing a kid because we're not offering these classes, and just to back, I guess rewind, how did we come up with AP seminar versus these other courses?
The AP seminar fits in our English department in lieu of English 10H, 10 honors. So it's budget-neutral. We were looking at the, we had this conversation last year about the honors and the AP offerings, and we thought this would be a good way of introducing the AP pathway without, you know, the risk of not doing well on an AP exam. So the other course that we were looking at...
But that kind of defeats rigor, if, in my eyes.
Not everybody can do the rigor.
I get it, I get it, but if you're going to call it an AP, I don't know.
It is an AP, and it is, and it is, it prepares the student, hopefully, for the AP, right?
It is an AP class. It's one of the...
For the exam AP.
Chris and myself and Scott De Bellis, we participated in a couple workshops with the College Board, and one of the things that they evaluated all of our courses, and one of the recommendations that they gave us is that we need to consider looking at the AP seminar, right? It's being done in many schools throughout our region, it was launched last year. It's one of two courses that lead to Capstone Project. There's also AP Research, right, which we're not offering, but it's something that we may want to consider offering, leading to a...
Leading to a Capstone Project. So the question is why? Because it was recommended to us, right? In terms of really expanding our offering, and in addition to that, that the research shows that students who start off in an AP seminar class do much better, right, in AP Literature, in AP Lang. So that was one of the things that we looked at also.
So should it be offered in ninth grade versus tenth grade?
It's a tenth grade course.
Tenth grade course.
It's a tenth grade course, and it's recommended by the college board to introduce in the tenth grade.
Okay.
So that's why we offer that.
Got it.
To your point, you know, we are looking at different offerings. I know Dr. Goodman has challenged us to look at what other schools are offering, not just public school, but private schools.
Right, because I think the Fordham-Iona thing is a big, you know, it's a big thing, right? You know, you look at the kids that are leaving, and if they're leaving for rigor, if we can offer some more science research or these other business classes, I think it would help. I think it's definitely part of something we should explore. I don't know if it's too late for next year. And I, one idea that I had, you know, you know, we lost the funding for the Jump Start program here, right? And there was a certain amount of capital left over, and I was actually disappointed because obviously my junior, right, figures in my luck, missed out on, on that. So I would like to see if we can make a suggestion, this may be, this is me just thinking outside the box, but having a math teacher for next year, because we have wonderful math teachers, right? Have a math teacher teach a prep SAT, ACT course. So can make, do better with the schedule, trying to have less kids, more, you know, combine some classes for math and offer an SAT prep course next year as a teach, as a, as a session, if it's possible. I don't know if it's, we can do this budget or we can figure this out, but I think it has to come, has to do with the way we schedule our classes, and how many kids are in each class, because I have, I know there's kids, I know there's five kids in some classes, or eight kids, or whatever it may be. And again, we have, we're a small school, but if we can look at this for next year, because we can't offer this Jump Start, maybe we can offer it as a class. I think it'd be a great idea, because we have wonderful math teachers that could teach this throughout the whole year.
Yes, so with the English and the, and that part of the SAT, we do have this whole vocabulary program, so we know we're really touching that, but we really don't have anything for math. So it could be something that we could look at if there's some free time in the schedule or in somebody's, you know, change the name of one of those small classes, you know, sort of like what we do with the support seminars that we have in the middle school. I mean, this is something we could do. I'm just concerned of how this looks. I always have to say how it looks on the college transcript. They won't be like super impressed if you take that. Yeah, so.
Maybe, maybe it's.
We'd have to call it something else.
Or you call it something else, or maybe it's an elective, I don't know. Maybe there's something where we.
Maybe we do something like, it's more like, you know, something higher level sounding.
We had this funding for a while, right, for the Jump Start, and it's tough for us to fund it, but if we can kind of make it into a, into the offerings, maybe we can do it that way. That's, you know, that's just one idea. But the podcasting is great, Mr. Moore, I love that, because my sixth grade is involved with that. Otherwise, that was just some of the, my ideas, some of my suggestions.
And this is, you know, we're getting started on the budget process, and, you know, a lot of what you see here is, you know, because of our high school administration and Chris, but also it's because of things that you've really suggested at all these board meetings. And, you know, sometimes we can't do it every, the year you say it, but we do really listen. And this has been a really, really helpful board with this, especially in this area.
I have a junior, so my junior went to all these, you know, overnight trips. He loved it, and I think it's great exposure for the kids, for all the students, and having the schools come in here and getting a feeder school would be even better, right? If we can get that feeder school, whether it's Binghamton, or Tulane, or South Carolina, the kids love here, and Alabama loves us, you know, if we can grab one of these schools as a feeder school, that'd be even better.
And we have been, and what I think is so exciting, because when I first came here, you know, people were like, oh, nobody's going to come to Tocco, we're so little. And they do come to Tocco, and now they know who we are. We're sending good kids there, they're meeting great kids, they're seeing our faculty.
I guess my only, are we hurting ten honor kids, like taking that away, making an AP seminar? Like, like Laura said, sometimes it's too much rigor, right? I just don't want to make sure we hurt students by doing this. Is that, is that, I don't know.
Well, see, what we've seen in other districts is that is where the seminar fits. And that students who fit the profile of a ten honors are the perfect fit for a college seminar, because again, it's an introductory AP course.
There's also, it was recommended by the college board, and the other thing that we're trying to focus on, how can we get the most for what we're offering? So this is also going to be done in a budget neutral, right? As well as the AP cybersecurity, it's all budget neutral. So we're trying to find a way to look at what we're offering, how can we refine that, right? How we can collapse and consider other things, and making sure that we still can compete with schools that are around us, giving our students the best chance so they can do well, whatever their pursuits may be.
And again, we're looking at college transcripts, so sometimes when you have an honors class and you don't take the AP, they're saying, well, you know, it, it, it makes it seem like, you know, you took an honors and you couldn't take an AP. It's thought of not as, as positively as we may think, but AP is always thought of as positively.
What makes one AP budget neutral and another not? What, what makes, why is AP cybersecurity, for example, budget neutral? Or what makes, why is that? Is that just because we're using an existing staff? Is that, is that the reason why? Okay.
And like for the ten honors, if we use an AP seminar, that's like the teacher's just teaching something.
That teacher, that teacher.
So it's like, yeah, you subtract it.
Right. Or, so, but is there, do they have to go for training for these courses or as well? So that's, so that's something that's.
And that's, that's something we pay for.
But that's not budget neutral, then you're going to have to pay that teacher if that training is, what, three thousand dollars for their summer session, right? So it's really, it is, but I get it. So, but that teacher can then just go to this, you don't have to.
I just want to know the difference.
So first of all, I cannot express how impressed I am with guidance from when I first, when I had my first oldest child in 2015, and then in 2021, and now having a senior. I mean, the growth, particularly from my guidance counselor, is just phenomenal, amazing. We are doing a fantastic job, particularly this year, the College Cafe has been great. The guidance counselors, the meetings are on point, so much knowledge, so, such a difference in what I've experienced in the past. They're, they're really doing a fantastic job. And the college visits, we, we participated in them, great. It was great that I didn't have to go see those schools. I saw enough of them. Been all over the country, I was very happy to let you guys take some, so thank you for that. And they were really helpful, and, and, you know, weeded out some that we thought, and also made us interested in others that we weren't so thoughtful of. Love that South Carolina is coming to talk to the eleventh graders, when I saw that. Is that going to be offered to all, like, is that an assembly or just to the kids who sign up? Fantastic, because really, the trend through all of the Northeast is that kids want to go to the South. It's a fantastic school. I have visited it three times, and I will be there for a fourth. But it's a great school, and I'm really glad to see high level, it's a high ranked school coming to talk to the kids and show them what it takes to get in, what they need, and to apply. So it's a great job on, on all of that. I did actually do a little bit of research on the AP seminar class, because I'm, I was concerned about it. So I just wanted to clarify a few things. Are we doing AP seminar or AP Seminar English 10? Because there are two different courses.
I think seminar includes research. We would be looking at.
No, no, no. AP Seminar or AP Seminar English 10.
Yeah, I think seminar is inclusive of research. We would just be doing the 10H, the 10, Seminar 10.
So there's two, there's AP Seminar, right? And then there's AP Seminar English 10. So you're saying we're going to do the AP Seminar English 10 piece of it?
Yes.
We are not just doing regular AP Seminar?
We're not doing the research piece, no.
Okay, but, well, the research piece is a different piece that then goes into the Capstone program.
Correct.
So for AP Seminar English 10, is that going to give the kids, are colleges going to view that course as a core English credit, so that they will still have four years of core English requirement? Because in some cases, let's, let's take like AP Psych, for example, right? We count that as a science. AP counts it as history. Colleges view it as an elective. So will AP Seminar count as an English core credit on the transcript, and will colleges view it that way? Because colleges want to see four years of English.
Correct.
So what, what will they view as?
That's how I understand. So when we worked with the college board, one of the reasons why they recommended this was because it's a stronger English course. So we worked with a gentleman coming down from Albany, Matt Zorro, right? He leads the whole Capital Region, Matt, but he's the consultant for all the AP schools in, in our region. I'm sorry, schools in our region. So not only did we have two conferences with him, we actually also brought him down here also. So it is our understanding that, yes, it, it's going to satisfy that requirement.
I would like that, I would like guidance to reach out to colleges that our kids apply to, to confirm that, only because AP is business, right? And they are, you know, how many kids take their, their tests and everything, that's all, it's all their business, right? So they're trying to get us to enroll in this new course. May be good, may not be good. A lot of research that I saw said that it was, it was good. But I would like it confirmed that the colleges that our students tend to apply to will consider that course a core English course towards their four years of English required.
We'll tell.
Okay, because I'm, I am concerned about losing English honors. I don't think every kid can handle APs. I think, and, and, and parents and kids tend to sign up for APs even when maybe they shouldn't be, and then they struggle in the course. I do know a lot of kids are having a hard time in the 10th grade with the AP courses. I know that the ninth graders are having a hard time with it. So I don't want to see us take away honors, because we do have kids that can work to that level, and that's a great level for them, just to be able to say, oh, you're at an AP course. But if that AP course is going to drive down your GPA, it's kind of, they want to see rigor, but they also want to see good GPAs. And there's a balance there. And so I don't want that, I don't want that to happen to kids. And I also don't want to overwhelm kids with too many APs for the sake of being at an AP. However, people do say that the seminar class does have a lot of good value to it, does help with the writing, although some people did say that English honors actually was a better course to lead into AP Lit. That it, what you do in English honors builds a better foundation for AP Lit.
It's the Lit, eleven.
Lang, sorry. Oh, no, they were saying, they were saying for Lit. They were, they weren't saying, it was like, they were talking about both Lang and Lit, but they were saying it does help with Lit better. Okay, so that said, I just, I want clarification. I need, I need to know that. And so you said you're not looking at doing the research part at all, and so the Capstone part of it, because it is built as a Capstone program, so it's AP Seminar, AP Research, and then you get this new Capstone thing, so we're not looking at doing that. Okay. Also, in your presentation, you guys talked about the library offering the district citation method, and this is something that I've actually had conversations with some of our high school English teachers over, because one thing that my children, I have one child who's now in grad school, and another child who's at a highly ranked college, and also their friends, we've had this conversation, is that they were taught one way of citing, and then when they got to college, it was a different way. And so when I was talking to the English teachers, they were like, you know, we had no idea. And so maybe we should, we need to start thinking about teaching both MLA and what's the other one? APA. We need to start teaching both, because that's, you don't know which school you're going to go to and which is required, but it does seem, I guess we do MLA, and it does seem that most colleges want to see APA. But it is worth teaching kids how to do both. Also, there was that, and, okay, so, sorry, I'm sorry, I was so much. The APs, I noticed that we still have AP pre, we have pre-calc. Are we still doing advanced pre-calc, or did we get rid of that?
We have not gotten rid of, so right now, we have pre-calc, right? And we have calculus, we have AP calculus.
Okay, but we don't, we used to have AP, Advanced Pre-Calc last year. We do not, do we not have that anymore?
No, we don't.
Okay. Because that was a great class, Advanced Pre-Calc, and my daughter took that class, and then she actually asked to take the AP and did fantastic on the AP without taking the AP class. So my thought was, if we're going to introduce APs, why not introduce AP Pre-Calc, which would count, they're already taking Pre-Calc. The AP Pre-Calc was very straightforward, what, what the teacher covered in the class. Naturally, my daughter was able to pass the AP exam on, and so that might be something that's cross-neutral and effective in getting the kids a, a math credit. And any thoughts on doing, a lot of kids, especially those that go into science or engineering, say that one regret they have when it came to high school and math was that they should have taken AP Calc AB in junior year, and then taken AP Calc BC in senior year, because that would have set them up better for the required calculus that they have to do in college. Even when they get the AP credit, certain majors still make you take that college, and that AP BC is really what sets them up to make that an easier path. And that was a regret that some of our graduates feel was an offer to them, and that really would have been beneficial to them.
So quickly, just to respond to a couple of comments, Janice here. Our math department in particular did a lot of revamping of their curriculum, including the pre-calculus course, where they looked at some of the units of studies and merged some of that information into the courses. Not just with that class, for example, we looked at what some of the other schools were doing, we offered Principles of, Principles of Geometry, Principles of Algebra. We designed, we designed some of those courses to strengthen them. So definitely we'll take some new feedback, meet with the math department, get their take on it, and have further conversations. So definitely took some notes on it.
Yeah, I mean, again, the teacher did such a great job last year. This is, I think that she's capable of, of offering it. And lastly, you know, the Iceland trip, thank you. We're looking forward to it. We're all signed up. It's, it's fantastic. I love that it is based around the science classes, which makes it more open to more kids, more students, and, you know, not just like, oh, well, you take Spanish, so we're going to go to Spain. Being science-based, it's really open to everyone. It's going to be a fantastic trip. Really looking forward to it, and it's a great opportunity. You guys are doing a great job. I know my questions were tough, but.
We welcome.
You know, I've, I've been doing the college thing for a long time, and these, these are just things that I know could be pitfalls.
Thank you.
Allison, I can't follow you with your questions. You know what, I, I did come to mind, listening to Allison's questions, which were very, everyone's questions are good, and, and great job. I, I too would just echo real quick. I've been here for, you know, twenty years in the district, and I have watched a lot of things improve. This is one that's really markedly improved. And we started out with the College Cafe a couple of years ago, and that was now grown to seventy percent of the kids using it, where like, I don't think maybe when it first came out, and my son was, I would say, you know, should go to the College Cafe, and he didn't even know what it was. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't real. So now it's part of the culture, which is great.
And that the school councils track.
Right, I love that. I think that's really, yeah, no, I think it's, it's a testament to just sort of communication, which you highlighted. One of the things that, that struck me when Allison was talking, and it's sort of a, maybe a question comment, is that, so Allison has the benefit, and I do a little bit also, of having college students, right? So we can sort of look back on what would have been, or what worked, or what doesn't work, and so I think part of, of the challenge for families in any school, really, is knowing where your, where your child's going to end up, right? So who knows? Are they going to be an engineering major, or are they going to go to, you know, are they going to go to trade school for HVAC back, or are they going to be in, you know? So it's understanding where they're going to end up, and my point is that I think the guidance has done a great job of getting better. I think mapping it out of the course catalog is part of that, but when you're listening to a parent who's already gone through it and can have the, the 2020, right? I can see now what, I think that the guidance could do a better job, just construct a prism of sitting down with families, and in ninth grade, you don't really necessarily know, but, you know, Scott's point was, okay, we want rigor, 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 keep parents here AP, AP. There are some kids that may take one AP their whole curriculum, and they'll go to a just a fine school, they're, maybe they're test optional, but they have great, all these other things, and so when you say portrait of, what does that look like? We have to be dynamic, right, as a district, and we have to think about, maybe some, some children don't go to college at all, and they, they're really better off at a trade. And so we have to also be careful about pigeonholing a sort of narrow focus on rigor, rigor, college, college. Allison has great questions about, I've, my daughter did great, and she scored high, but, you know, then there are kids who may never, never, and so it's, we need to have maybe physics one, and maybe they'll never do physics AP, but they have that one, and they, they're showing the college that they're able to do a higher level class, but it's not AP. So my point is that, I think those are great questions, and I think we also have to also take a step back and really get to know our families, right? And get to know those kids, and that's really a guidance, not just checking the boxes, you know, you had, you're working on the essay, and you're working, and you're putting your college list together, but sometimes in ninth grade, you kind of have a sense of, let's map this out to the best of our ability, and that could change, but I think everybody has a story to say when they're, when they're applying to college, and it doesn't have to be an AP story. And it doesn't have to be a, you know, valedictorian story. It can be, I struggled, and I did amazing by the time I got to my senior year. So I just, I think there's a pause there with rigor, I think it's important, I think Scott's point is, but you know, people are going to leave. We're never going to change that. I mean, my sister's out in Long Island, you know, and she goes to public school, and they leave her private school down there, too. It's just part of the nature of where we are. People have the means, people have legacy, they have all reasons, and we can't get caught up in, we can try better, holding on to kids, they shouldn't leave for facility reasons, but I think that, I think you did an excellent job, and I think that we're just going at a great track, and I want to thank you for all the efforts, and thank the whole staff and the guidance for doing really fabulous jobs.
Yeah, I also like, oh, sure.
Can I just quickly comment? I mean, one of the things that we were very mindful of, and again, I'm going to thank Dr. Goodman, because she constantly encourages to think about all of our learners. So, you know, when we offered four AP classes this year and proposed it last year, we also did the same thing with electives. So it was not just AP, we offered four new APs and four new electives, recognizing that we have to meet the needs of all of our learners. We didn't stop there. In the sixth grade, we recognized some of our students have some executive functional weaknesses, so we created a class to make sure by the time students get to the seventh, eighth grade, high school, some of those issues from test-taking, what have you, are no longer an issue. So we are trying to make sure we find balance. We're not just focusing on top-tier colleges. Like I said, we brought in Westchester Community College, recognizing that's where some students wanted to go. They all got accepted. We didn't just do college trips to Boston College, we did college trip right to Westchester Community College, so that students can get the feel of the campus. We're also now looking, working with Westchester Community College, are trying to bring them in to introduce students to some of the career pathways, that they don't have to pursue a, 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 an associate's degree, that they can go and just learn a field of study. So we're trying to make sure we're meeting the needs of all students within the budget confines that we have.
It's a balance.
It is a balance.
And I hear it's a trades are overlooked.
So that's, by speaking of the trades, and I think Amy knows where I'm going to go with this, I would like to see a little more focus on BOSEs next year. I know it's a budget thing, and I know it's something we can discuss as a board, but to Laura's point, you're going to have kids that go into trades. And listen, my family is a family of, you know, cops and construction workers, right? And roofers and carpenters, so I, I think it's something we can discuss and look into and see where the budget is with, with BOSEs, but I think that's something that should, we should talk further about, but I just want to put it out there for that trade discussion. And I get the rigor, I'm, I'm very, of course, I'm rigor-focused, but the classes, maybe they're not APs, again, are these business classes, are the science research classes, right? The engineering, science, robotics, and AI class, right? Where's the world going right now? Everything is AI.
But we have that built into some of our classes now.
Right. Well, I was also going to say the cybersecurity course that we're proposing actually comes with fieldwork licensure, so students will have those license, they'll take the, the props for that, those assessments, and get the opportunity to take the licensing exam. The world markets class comes with a Bloomberg certification, so there's some things we've woven into the classes with consideration to the trade and the different types of skills and certificates you'll need to participate in them, into the existing coursework. Yeah, and we've looked a lot at, you know, within our technology and engineering, you know, like how we could redesign, so for example, we used to have a media class, we changed that into engineering two, so that, you know, colleges or, you know, trade schools can see that there was a progression of learning there from engineering one to engineering two, that those would open up the opportunity to go into an AP, like cybersecurity or college, computer science. But it could also lead to more electives, it could lead to someone going into the marketing or the entrepreneurship course.
The architecture, because I know we have architecture now, where some takes it, yeah, it's a great class.
So one of the things we did was like, looked at the different pockets of, you know, the departments to see like, who could take on like a CTE type of course. And, you know, a lot of people, like, you know, Mr. Pappas's architecture background, Ms. Pappas's, I'm sorry, Ms. Muska's fashion design, you know, and, and, and marketing and shopping experience, all of that has kind of helped us to build, you know, as much as we can within a small school, some opportunities for those areas. Ms. Case's experience with entrepreneurship, yeah.
Yeah, when she gave that presentation, like, whenever, a couple of years ago. So that's great. And it also goes to show you how like talented the faculty are, and like how much more they can bring to the table than just their subject matter. I just have one quick question, I know we're, we want to wrap it up.
I have one more.
We have, we have more.
I shouldn't say we. So speaking of like the Iceland trip, which I think is great, and I know sometimes like when, for the DC trips and those trips, it's like if you want to help support another kid to go, so is there that opportunity with the ICE? Because it is an expensive experience, where we can offer it to people who may not be able to afford it, or subsidize, or whatever.
Sure. So a couple of quick things. First of all, we're looking to take 32 students, we already have 31 students signed up.
Okay.
Just to the channel, so we only have like one more seat that's available. So there, we're exploring some fundraising opportunities. Ms. Buchanan, as the science teacher, she's looking into that, and that's once we have solidified by around February 1st, who's going on the trip, those are some of the things that she's going to be looking at. She's one of the co-leaders of the trip along with me. So there are also fundraising opportunities that we're going to be exploring.
Okay, great. I just have one last comment, just to go off Laura and what Scott said. You know, the bal, what I'm concerned about most is the balance for the kids who can do the work, but they are not necessarily AP kids, are we only leaving them with classes that are not up to their level, which does look bad then on their transcript? So you could have a kid who, for example, my oldest daughter, she struggles, she struggles a lot in school, but she is very bright and is now going for her masters. But if we start taking away courses that your average student who's, you know, the world is filled with B and C students, not everybody is this high-level A student, and that's fantastic. I actually think that the more you work in school, the more you adapt in life, because you've learned what, what you need to do to get by. However, if we start only making it where it's the classes that are electives, or the base level class, or AP, we're missing an opportunity for these kids to have a strong transcript. And, and I, I think we're missing the boat there on it. So we, we've got to kind of stop pulling away on, on our regular offerings and making it, well, we've got this elective or that elective, or we've got this AP, there still has to be this middle ground, there, there just has to be, we can't forget about those kids. And that was kind of my point with the English honors. It, it worries me that we're constantly going, well, we should be taking APs, and I get it, I, I have high-level learners too, I get it with the APs. But I'll tell you right now, we have a full course of APs plus an online course, and I'm not so sure that was the best decision. We're doing great in it, but I'm not so sure, mental health-wise, that that was the best decision.
Okay, and I do think that, from what I understand about the seminar, it is like a 10H, just a more interesting class for kids. So I don't think, I don't think it's, it's, the kids who can do the English 10H can do the seminar class.
But they're not, they're not getting the same sort of credit, and I, we need, I absolutely, you've got to come back and, and let me know if colleges are going to view that as a core, as part of the four years of English that's required. Not just being a 10, I mean, a lot of the schools that we, that we apply to.
There are a few colleges that I, that we reach out to when we have immediate questions, so we will definitely get some answers by tomorrow for sure. And to Dr. Goodman's point, we're not looking to take away anything, we're, we're not. I mean, we'd be irresponsible to do that. I just want to quickly acknowledge that. Honors classes continue in English in 11th grade, it continues in their senior year. We only recommended for the 10th grade because it was what was recommended by the college board. I belong to a principal group, and we did not touch this last year, like many other schools in our region did, wanted to see how it went. So in conversation with the college board, that's why we considered looking at adding it now in the 10th grade. We have English nine honors, that's maintaining, that's not being changed, and students who are in English nine honors, they're on a pathway to this AP seminar course. And it's a pilot, right? It's not something that we have to maintain, but it is a pilot.
Thank you.
Last little note on, you said before, very, very quickly, on the trades and the kids that maybe are not going to go to college. BOSEs discussion is always a difficult discussion every single year, but you mentioned it before that I wanted to just double down on the career fair option. So I think that would be really good, at the very least, to expose our kids more to the trades through some sort of a career fair. I know it's been something that's been explored, so you already mentioned it before, so it sounds like you're already on it, but I think that'd be really great to drive home, so if we can't do BOSEs, at least, at least our kids are getting to see.
Or maybe for their senior internships, like try to, there's so many people who are contractors and bumbers and.
This is something that we talked about after the school councils went and visited Westchester Community College, finding out that they have this, this trade option.
Yeah.
So we want to try to bring them in, and see if we can bring in individuals in those fields to make the students.
Absolutely.
So you really need to know, they don't need to get an associate's degree, they can get licensed through Westchester, and Westchester is not expensive. What is it? Practically free.
Oh, it's very, very.
Yeah, so that could be an option for our kids to learn about and go that way.
All right. Great discussion.
Thank you.
If I could say one thing, I just want to really thank Jess Perillo and Bill Treglia, they have really worked so incredibly hard this year, and all our teachers and staff, and of course, you guys.
Nicoletto, I mean, she's part of that foundation of guidance. So they, our school council has done an amazing job, and yes, just want to highlight again the strength of the instructional practices of our teachers. The results that you saw on the field where we've closed the gap, more students scoring threes and fours, 31 AP scholars, it all happens because of what's happened in the classroom, support at home, and the work that our students are doing. So, you know, commendations to everyone.
Yes.
And thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Excellent.
Thank you. All right. You got another.
I think so. I think I saw when I was.
Okay. Faith? Okay, is everybody ready? Is Pete here?
He went to the.
Okay. Okay, we're just waiting for all our board members, a little commercial break. Okay, okay, we're ready to start now. Okay, so, good evening, board trustees, faculty, parents, and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to present as we embark on the critical journey developing our 2025, 2026 school budget. This process is more than just numbers on a page. It's a testament to our shared dedication to delivering excellent education and supporting the growth and success of every student. As leaders and advocates for our school community, we are entrusted with the vital task of creating a budget that reflects our educational vision, meets the diverse needs of students and families, and upholds our commitment to fiscal responsibility. Over the next few minutes, we'll examine the key factors shaping the year's budget. Together, we'll navigate the challenges we face, explore the opportunities to innovate and improve, and discuss how our collective efforts ensure a financial plan that not only sustains our mission, but drives us forward. Developing a school budget is a detailed and thoughtful process, designed to ensure that our financial plan aligns with our educational priorities while meeting legal requirements. Here we outline the key steps in the development of the 2025, 2026 school budget. First, we review educational goals and gather data. We begin by evaluating the needs of students, teachers, and facilities, ensuring alignment with the district's long-term strategic plan. This phase focuses on reviewing our educational goals and gathering critical data to inform budget priorities. Then we roll over current budget and set preliminary, preliminary goals. We start with a roll over of the current year's budget, applying known assumptions and analyzing prior spending patterns, including actual versus budgeted amounts. During this phase, we assess current year performance and enrollment projections to determine how shifts in student enrollment may affect funding and expenses. Preliminary budget goals are then set to prioritize key initiatives and projects. Lastly, we develop revenue and expenditure projections. Revenue projections are calculated using expected sources such as state and federal aid, property taxes, and of course, accounting for tax caps, and other income streams. While preliminary revenue data is available in January, the final state budget is not adopted until April 1st. We also identify and plan for any constraints, such as mandated expenditures or potential funding cuts. On the expenditure side, courses are calculated and characterized, categorized into areas like salaries, benefits, curriculum, facilities, transportation, and debt services. Anticipated changes are factored into projections. This phase continues until the superintendent's proposed budget is ready for presentation. Then we draft the proposed budget, using compiled data and projections, we draft a detailed budget document that balances revenues and expenditures. This draft is reviewed internally to ensure it addresses students' needs while maintaining fiscal responsibility to our taxpayers. Revisions are made as new information becomes available. Then we present the superintendent's proposed budget. The superintendent's proposed budget will be, will be presented to the school board on Monday, March 10th, 2025. This marks a key step in finalizing the budget plan. The board adoption of the budget is the next step. The board will adopt, will vote to adopt the superintendent's budget on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. We often have to review and revise the draft budget before the budget is formally adopted by the board. Then there's a public hearing. As required by law, a public hearing will be held to provide transparency and gather community feedback. This hearing is scheduled for Monday, May 5th, 2025. Of course, we're getting feedback from the community and the board along this whole process, concluding with the budget vote and trustee election, which is on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. By law, school districts in New York State must adopt a balanced budget. The requirement of a balanced budget reflects the principles of financial responsibility, legal compliance, and efficient resource allocation. Maintaining a balanced budget ensures the district operates within its means, fostering financial stability and accountability while delivering a quality education to our students. The district's revenue primarily relies on two significant, highly regulated and restricted sources, real property taxes and state aid, both controlled by New York State. Since the 2012-13 school year, real property taxes have been capped under the state mandated formula. These two capped revenue sources are marked with an asterisk, asterisk on the slide collectively account for approximately 90% of our total revenue. Balancing the budget, one of the key challenges we face is balancing competing priorities. For example, while we remain committed to enhancing academic programs and maintaining our facilities, there's also a growing demand for increased security measures, such as adding more cameras. Security enhancements are undeniably important, but they require funding that might otherwise be used to support other areas, such as instructional materials or program improvements. This highlights the need for collaboration and creative problem-solving to find efficiencies and ensure we can effectively meet both our educational and safety objectives. Expenditure considerations, the process of rolling over the budget serves as the foundation for developing the upcoming school year's financial plan. It begins with carrying forward the current year's, the current fiscal year's budget as a baseline. This step allows us to evaluate existing allocations while systematically adjusting for anticipated changes and new priorities. Rolling over the budget, so our current 24 Rolling over the budget. So our current 24-25 budget is forty-one million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred. As part of the rollover, we incorporate a series of assumptions based on historical data, trends, and known variables. These assumptions include rolling over salaries, which accounts for an increase based on steps and other collective bargaining agreement mandates. We are currently in negotiations with all three units. All three collective bargaining agreements expire at the end of this year and we're in negotiations. Benefits are increasing somewhere between ten and eleven percent, and that's based on premium increases and we are always budget conservatively because membership changes fluctuate. You know, one or two people go on the plan and it's a big hit to the budget. Transportation contracts are increasing at approximately five percent. We have an increase in debt service for some of the 2023 projects, which will be offset by building aid. Once those are completed, we project facilities maintenance increases because they never go down. We are seeing an increase in general insurance premiums. And when we roll over, we also look at any unbudgeted additions from this year such as that we've had for UPK oversight. We also account for increases in certain contractual obligations and BOCs costs. Through this process, we identify areas where costs may increase or decrease, they usually don't decrease, and adjust the rollover budget accordingly. This initial framework provides a starting point for setting preliminary goals and priorities, ensuring that our budget aligns with the district's strategic plan. As new information becomes available, such as updated enrollment figures, finalized state aid amounts, we refine the assumptions and adjust the budget to reflect the most accurate financial outlook. This approach ensures we remain responsive to the needs of our students and community while maintaining our fiscal responsibility. I always talk about this. Okay. One of our most significant uncertainties that we face each year is managing tax sorcery refunds. While we have a reserve in place to cover funds from prior years, as illustrated in this historical chart, this area remains a high-risk financial factor. Without annual replenishment, this reserve could be depleted quickly, leaving us vulnerable to unexpected claims. Tax sorcery claims are inherently unpredictable and represent a considerable financial burden for school districts, particularly small ones like ours. As shown in the chart, the fluctuations in refund amounts from year to year can be substantial with no reliable tools or mechanisms to forecast these costs. This unpredictability underscores the critical need to address and prepare for the impact of tax sorcery claims on a district's budget. As of January 17th, 2025, the district has already issued seventy-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars in tax sorcery settlements, and this serves as a stark reminder of the financial strain these claims impose and highlights the importance of prudent planning to ensure fiscal stability. Revenue considerations. As I mentioned before, our largest source of revenue is real property taxes, which are regulated by the state through the tax cap formula that limits the amount we could levy. So this leads us to ask what drives the tax cap increase. Well, each year is unique and the tax cap is influenced by several factors. Our tax-based growth factor, assigned annually by the state, reflects the change in our district's taxable property base. The inflation factor, it's given by the state gives us that calculation and it's capped at two percent. So the past few years when it was six percent, eight percent, I think now it's close to three percent. We can only increase the levy, we have to use two percent as the factor in our formula. Pilots, payments in lieu of taxes, these change annually based on the terms in the agreements. They affect our calculation. Our capital exclusion is a critical element. It varies from year to year. It's our district's capital debt net of building aid, and it has a direct impact on our tax cap. Understanding these factors helps us navigate the complexities of budgeting within the tax cap framework while maintaining transparencies to our community. This chart shows the fluctuations and variations for our school district from year to year in these state-provided factors of the formula. While the inflation factor is the same for all school districts and municipalities, the tax-based growth factor is unique to each district and municipality. The formula allows for an increase to the levy based on the tax-based growth factor. This can drive variations from district to district on the levy limits, and our district has no control over these factors. State aid. State aid is one of the two primary revenue sources for our district, accounting for a significant portion of our budget. It provides essential funding for instructional programs, student services, and operational needs. The uncertainty of state aid is something we are thinking about right now. New York State finalizes its budget on April 1st. At this time, we did receive preliminary estimates from the governor's office today. We will be analyzing these numbers released just this afternoon. The governor's budget last year did propose reductions in state aid and highlight ongoing challenges of maintaining funding levels, and we don't know what impact the Rockefeller Institute report on foundation aid will have on the governor's numbers. So we are analyzing the data we just got this afternoon. Budget contingency and what if? Well, every year we talk about the what ifs, because that's really a critical aspect of responsible financial planning, is anticipating and preparing for potential uncertainties or unforeseen events. In the context of the school budget development, this means building flexibility and resilience into our financial framework to ensure the district can respond effectively to challenges. Budget contingency planning is not about predicting the future but rather preparing for a range of what-if scenarios, including on this list of unknown expenditures, and it's not exhaustive, such as collective bargaining agreement negotiations. As Faith said, all three bargaining units are in negotiations. Change in program placement and needs of students with disabilities based on their IEPs for current or maybe even newly registered students. Changes in transportation costs for both in and out of district students. Additionally, more uncontrolled expenditures are utility increases, consumption and prices, facilities, operations, and maintenance costs, reductions in state and federal aid, and even though, let's say we get an increase this year, we know that foundation aid is going to be changed according to the governor, so we even have to think of anything we add of what's going to happen in the future. Taxatory or legal issues, health insurance, membership fluctuations, as Faith also talked about, and how much contingency should be included in the budget for unknowns. Now, our formal guidelines do not exist. Instead, the Office of the State Controller provides audit recommendations and industry standards which are applied. To address these uncertainties, we incorporate conservative budgeting, estimating revenues cautiously to avoid overcommitting resources, reserve funds, maintaining adequate reserves for emergencies and unanticipated needs, contingency allocations, including contingency in the budget to cover unforeseen expenses without disrupting core programs, and ongoing monitoring, regularly reviewing budget performance throughout the year to identify potential issues early and adjust as necessary. And here we are, right within our budget process. It seems like it comes up on us really quickly. So today, January 21st, 2025, is the school budget development update. And as you can see, February 3rd is a preliminary budget forecast. February 24th is the budget presentation update. March 10th is the presentation of the superintendent's proposed 25-26 budget. And all along, we are planning on all those meetings and other meetings too. April 22nd is for the Board of Education adaptation of the 25-26 proposed budget. April 29th is our budget review. May 5th is the budget hearing, and the important date for everybody to write down is May 20th, 2025, the annual budget vote and trustee election. So we thank you. I know it's been a long night, and we look forward to sharing more detailed information as we delve deeper into the budget development. Now, as I am up here, I just have a reminder for families. I just have one more thing to say. This doesn't really have to do with this, but we need families because it does help us budget. To register for kindergarten, that's open now, and UPK lottery is also open. Please tell your friends and neighbors. Thank you.
All right. Well, that was a kickoff to a budget season that's going to go on for the next three months or so. So given the fact that we'll have plenty of time to talk about budget, let's not do discussion on that being we've gone so late and we have more to do. So we'll skip discussion on that, but it's a good way to kick it off. We'll have plenty, plenty of time to talk and ask questions and go back and forth. Have to keep an eye on that foundation they can do because that's a little scary.
Yeah.
So, okay. All right. We got a little bit of business to do. Thank you for the presentation, by the way, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got a little bit of business to do, and then we have to go back into exec session to finish tonight. So let's get going on it. First up is, is there a consent agenda tonight?
No.
No, okay. Right into business. Okay. Proven agreement, resolved that the Board of Education approves.
We skipped comments by the board during.
Oh, yeah, we did. Yeah, we did that. Resolved that the Board of Education approves a contract with Silver Star Transportation for transportation to Six Flags Great Adventure at an amount not to exceed three thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-two cents for this one-time service. Do we have a motion? Torres, second. Allison, any discussion on this? All in favor. Proven agreement, resolved that the Board of Education approves a contract with Hudson Valley Charter Service Incorporated for transportation to Binghamton University at an amount not to exceed two thousand, eight hundred dollars for this one-time service. Do we have a motion? Torres, second. Scott, any discussion here? All in favor. Proven external auditor. Whereas Toccoho Union Free School Districts saw proposals for an external auditor to audit its financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, with the option of performing similar services for each of the four subsequent fiscal years, and whereas the proposal received were opened on December 11th, 2024, and now therefore be resolved based upon review of the proposals received, the Board of Education of Toccoho Union Free School District hereby appoints Bonadillo Incorporated LLP, having an office at 488 Madison Avenue, New York, New York, as the school district's external auditor for the purposes of auditing the financial statements of the school district for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, for a lump sum fee of thirty-seven thousand dollars plus a fee of five thousand for each single audit if required. And the school district shall have the option to extend the contract for each of the four subsequent fiscal years at a lump sum of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred plus a fee of five thousand, two hundred for each single audit if required for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2026, and a lump sum of forty thousand dollars plus a fee of five thousand, four hundred for each single audit if required for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2027, at a lump sum of forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars plus a fee of five thousand, six hundred for a single audit if required for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2028, and a lump sum of forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars plus a fee of five thousand, eight hundred and fifty for a single audit if required for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2029. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Board President to execute a contract with Bonadillo Incorporated LLP to serve as the district's, school district's external auditor as above described, and be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools and the business manager are authorized and empowered to take all necessary and appropriate action in order to further the purpose of this resolution and comply with the awarded contract. Do we have a motion? Allison, second. Laura, any discussion on this? All in favor. Proven architect. Whereas the district issued a request for proposals to retain an architect and engineering firm to provide comprehensive design and planning and consulting services to the district through various capital improvement projects, including renovation, expansions, and new construction initiatives to enhance the learning environment at the district and support the district's educational mission, whereas the district received a response from BBS Architects, landscapes, architects, and engineers in response to the district RFP. Whereas after a review of the response from BBS to the RFP, the district desires to engage BBS to provide the services to the district. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education approves the district engagement of BBS to provide the services pursuant to the standard form of agreement between the owner and architect made as of 21st day of January 2025, that it has been presented to and modified by the district. Be it further resolved that the Board authorizes the Board President and/or District Superintendent of Schools to execute the agreement and to take such other actions as are necessary to effectuate the resolution. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Scott, any discussion there? All in favor. Approve a cooperative purchase contract, whereas Ed Data is a shared services organization located in the state of New Jersey, and whereas Ed Data offers cooperative procurement solutions to public sector organizations throughout New York State, and whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District desires to use Ed Data time and materials cooperative purchasing contract to contract with Windowware by Gina LLC for window shade repair and replacement, and be resolved that the Board of Education of Toccoho Union Free School District hereby approves the use of Windowware by Gina LLC through Ed Data for window shade repair and replacement for a term from January 22nd, 2025 through April 1st, 2025. Do we have a motion? Allison, second. Laura, any discussion there? All in favor. Okay. Approve a pupil personnel agreement, resolved that the Board of Education of Toccoho Union Free School District approves the educational services agreement as follows. The Westchester School at a rate as set forth by NISID effective September 3rd, 2024 through June 27th, 2025. Do we have a motion? Torres, second. Scott, any discussion there? All in favor. Proven agreement to negotiate data privacy agreements, whereas four BOCs, Albany, Skahari, Schenectady, Saratoga BOCs, Madison and Oneida BOCs, and Brum, Tioga, have collaborated and entered into Article 5 General Municipal Law Intermunicipal Agreement Arrangement for the purposes of improving vendor management and data security and privacy practices with the school districts and/or BOC statewide, known as RIC-1 Risk Operations Center, whereas the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free District through its affiliation with a locally-based regional information center participates with the ROC and desires for the 2020-2025 fiscal year to authorize the ROC to enter into data privacy agreements and relatable exhibits with vendor and third-party contractors that include the requirements of and compliance with the New York State Education Law, Section 2-D and Part 121 Regulations related to student personally identifiable information, sorry, PII, and certain teacher and principal APR data privacy consortium. And, I'm sorry, whereas the ROC also partners with NISID, the Access for Learning Student Data Privacy Consortium, and the Educational Cooperative to negotiate and approve Ed Law 2-D compliant DPAs. Whereas the DPAs are presented to school districts and/or BOCs for final execution and do not require the expenditure of funds beyond those budgeted, and be it resolved that the Board of Education of Toccoho Union Free School District authorizes the attorneys designated by the ROC to negotiate and approve the DPAs for the software and/or technology resources, and be it further resolved that the Toccoho Union Free School District Board of Education grants the ROC and its designated attorneys the authority to negotiate the terms and conditions of the DPAs and take such actions as to effectuate the purpose and intent of this resolution. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Torres, anybody want me to read that again? I don't even know what I read the first part of it. It doesn't even make any sense. If I get the gist of it. All in favor?
Almost every.
All right. These are long ones, though. Approve an Education Law 2D agreement opt-in. The Education Law 2-D opt-in, known as the opt-in, is executed and entered into as the date of execution specified below by the school district identified below. The existing agreement with Erie One BOCs and Google will expire on June 30th, 2026, whereas Google LLC, a corporation having its principal offices at 1600 Amphitheater Parkway, Mountain View, California, zip code 94043, provides certain services to the district pursuant to certain contractual arrangements and vendor terms of service entered into between the district and vendor, and whereas the state of New York has enacted New York Education Law 2-D, and whereas Erie One Board of Cooperative Educational Services, a municipal corporation organized and existed under the education law of the state of New York, having its principal offices at 355 Harlem Road, West Seneca, New York, zip 14224, has entered into an Education Law 2-D agreement in order to address and give binding effect to the terms of the New York State Law 2-D, Section 1.8, of which agreement provides the school district can become a party to the agreement by executing. the agreement by executing a written opt-in to do so. And whereas, the district wishes to become a party to the agreement, now therefore, district attests and agrees as follows. One, the district has evaluated its needs with respect to New York Education Law 2-D and wishes to become subject to the terms and agreement. District hereby formally notifies Erie One BOSI's and confirms that it is opting into the agreement in accordance with Section 1.8. Therefore, by executing this opt-in, the district agrees to be bound by and comply with the terms of the agreement. Do we have a motion? Laura, second. Teraz, quick question. There's no money changing hands here, right? This is just us tacking on to a cooperative agreement already with BOSI's with Google?
Yeah, and it's to opt into the... It's to opt into the data privacy agreement. So, the last two resolutions were about data privacy agreements, where like we would normally have to contract with Google directly, and every other district that uses it would get their own. Here, Erie One BOSI's has already done it for us, and we're just opting into the same agreement. We all have the same terms for the data privacy agreement, so it's...
I asked that question, just to clarify, because I actually meant to email our attorneys about this. I don't know, I'm going to Google employee, but this is... So, I don't know if I should vote on this, but this is not, there's no money being exchanged.
There's no money being exchanged.
So, it's just a cooperative agreement, so I don't think...
It's just like we're opting into that data privacy agreement. We've already paid our Google license.
Right, so I don't think it matters. Okay, all in favor? Last up, personnel recommendations. Resolve that the Board of Education approves personnel recommendations A through F. Do we have a motion? Teraz, second. Scott, any discussion here? All in favor? Okay, so, we're all done. I'm not going to close the meeting out. We have to go back to executive session to finish up one more thing, and we'll close the meeting out in there, okay? Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.